Hey, I would like to call to order the April tenth two thousand twenty-three school board meeting at six oh one P M. Ms. Marsan, would you please take the role?
Yes, Mrs. Barker is absent right now. Mrs. Bell, here. Mr. Kushtert?
Here.
Mr. Lachner?
Here.
Mrs. McCabe?
Here.
Mr. McNally?
Here.
And Mrs. Fairgreen?
Here. Please stand for the pledge. Okay, um, moving on to item number two on the agenda, we do have citizen comments. So, uh, Mrs. McCabe, would you please read our introductory statement?
During the public comment period, members of the public body who wish to speak are asked to first state their name and community in which they reside. Each individual have up to three minutes to address the board on the topic of their choosing. We ask all individuals who address the board to do so with respect and civility toward others. Please note that personnel matters are sensitive and confidential. We also want to inform our speakers that all regular, special, and committee meetings are live streamed and available for viewing at any time on the district's YouTube channel. While the board will not respond to today's public comment during this meeting, we are committed to listening to you to help support our work for the district and on behalf of our students, staff, families, and community members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McCabe. Our speaker is Lori Bauer.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lori Bauer, and I was recently elected as Regional Board of School Trustee. So I am super excited to be here tonight. Um, I I'm excited to meet the, you know, get to know the board. Um, but yeah, I really don't have three minutes of of speaking to do it. So I just wanted to introduce myself.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes our citizen comments. So moving on to item number three, reports to the board. We'll start with our superintendent's report.
Thanks.
You so much. We're gonna start tonight, uh, bringing Commander Majewski forward board. Um, we've had a couple conversations in the past around handle with care. Um, one of the individuals who brought this to my attention is Commander Majewski. But I recognize there were still a few lingering questions before we brought this back to the board for approval. So tonight, uh, Commander Majewski is here. He's gonna read kind of an opening statement, and then any board members who have questions for Commander Majewski, please feel free to ask. And then later on in the agenda, um, we there will be an action item to vote on this. Commander Majewski.
Good to go. Can you guys hear me? Okay. All right, uh, I'm Eric Majewski. I'm, uh, I'm the Deputy Chief of Operations for Saint Charles Police Department. I oversee our Patrol and Investigations Division. Um, and I'm gonna talk about the program Handle With Care. Handle With Care is an initiative aimed at addressing children's exposure to violence and trauma. Childhood exposure to violence and trauma without the right support is often associated with increased risk of poor outcomes in emotional, behavioral, and physical health over the lifespan. Children exposed to violence and trauma are also at a higher risk of poor school-related outcomes, including the ability to focus, behave appropriately, and learn. They are more likely to enter the criminal justice system later in life, which can contribute to generational cycles of violence and system involvement. This project directly addresses the goal of mitigating these negative impacts of exposure to trauma when it does occur by providing support and onsite trauma-focused interventions by school staff and or mental health professionals, if necessary, to children identified by law enforcement and school personnel. The Handle With Care program is a notification to the school system by law enforcement when a child is exposed to trauma in the home or in the community to enable the child's school to handle the child with care upon his or arrival to school the next day following the incident. Exposure to trauma shall be construed broadly and shall mean and include any event where a child is a victim or witness, experiences, or is involved in or questioned relative to any of the following. The abuse of a family member, loved one, or pet, abuse or neglect, child custody, visitation, or su- or support, or other domestic, uh, relations controversy where the law enforcement, where there's law enforcement intervention, community violence, the commission of a crime, loss of a family member or friend, an overdose, the arrest of a family member, homelessness, mental illness and or substance abuse by a parent or caregiver, hospitalization or family illness, incarceration of a parent or family member, family member, sudden, unexpected, or frequent changes in caregiver, school program, or home life, natural disasters, or similar acts or experiences. The process will follow. Handle With Care establishes a system where the Saint Charles Police Department will notify District three oh three if they encounter school-aged children subjected to the above-mentioned trauma. The notification will be via email prior to the end of the officer's shift and will include simply Handle With Care, the child's name, approximate age, school attended if known, and the approximate time of the event. The notification will contain no specific information about the incident to maintain the privacy of the student and their family. Upon receipt of the Handle With Care notification, uh, identifying a child who has been exposed to trauma, the designated point person within each school will then disseminate the same notification to appropriate teachers, social workers, guidance counselors, and any other relevant staff. D three oh three will provide identified students who are exhibiting behaviors that are not consistent with their normal manner, uh, a safe person and space where they can receive additional support, such as postponing a test, accepting a misassignment, or allowing the student to rest if he or she is having a hard time focusing or staying awake, but otherwise not address the child about the incident. The appropriate D three oh three staff can determine the need for ongoing counseling or other interventions if the student is not currently involved with them with mental health services. If necessary, D three oh three may contact parents or guardians to obtain appropriate consents, uh, for ongoing mental health services for the student. D three real staff, uh, should not bring up the trauma unless initiated or prompted by the student or talk about the notification in front of others. Other local school districts in the area utilizing Handle With Care are West Aurora, uh, West Aurora School District with Aurora Police Department, Cane Land and Central School District through the King County Sheriff's Office, and Batavia School District with the Batavia Police Department. Uh, obviously, we understand that D three oh three schools, uh, are in other municipalities, so we intend to work with West Chicago, King County Sheriff, Camden Hills, South Elgin, to establish a program in order to afford all D three oh three students with the same accommodation.
Deputy Chief, thank you so much for that. Board members, questions?
I just wanted to say thank you for the documents that you had presented to the board that the public will be able to see. I thought they were really explanatory, really informative, and the piece about trauma and being able to, um, learn was really key. I already knew some of that, but I think it's really important for the public to see, so I really appreciated that. So, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Um, what role do the parents of these students play in the process?
Well, um, obviously, uh, certainly if there's an incident with the police, um, and a child is involved, we would notify parents anyway. Um, so, uh, certainly, um, we can contact parents, let them know that we're going to contact the school about the Handle With Care. Let's say, just a sake of argument that the father is arrested for domestic battery, and, uh, mom is present, mom is the victim. We could notify the, uh, parents of of our intention, uh, of what we're going to do to notify the school again with the brief information that's a child's name, Handle With Care, ensure that the parties involved, that we're not going to disclose any specific information other than the fact of the child's name and that an incident occurred, and that get them health or help or services. Again, the staff should not, uh, approach the child unless the child comes forward or is acting, uh, out of the out of the ordinary. Uh, that's it.
So just to, just to be clear, um, the process, as you have described, wouldn't require the parents' permission. It's just something that the police department would do on its own accord.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Okay. So, so let me ask one more question. That's a follow-up, which is what's the role and responsibility of DCFS in these situations?
Um, well, we would contact ECFS just like we would as a mandated reporter in any situation, irregardless of whether we're using Handle With Care or not. Um, so that would be taken care of on our end. Um, should the school district see the need to contact ECFS on their own, if they establish any kind of information via their protocol, um, they would do that too. So that doesn't change anything as far as our notification or the school's notification to contact ECFS in these circumstances.
Is is it protocol for those existing, um, municipalities? I think you'd mentioned West Aurora, Cane Land, Batavia. Do they have parental involvement in these?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. Um, uh, basically what I laid out in the, um, uh, the MOU, sample MOU is is basically what I got from them. So I don't, I don't know specifically as far as that's concerned. I don't have their specific policy, only their the MOU is a sample.
Gotcha. And as you know, when we discuss this in our safety committee, I'm I'm in support of it, but I think some other board members brought up some pretty good questions as to how the process would work, and and most notably parental involvement in this. I think there would maybe be some resistance from some parents if there wasn't parental involvement. I get it in circumstances where maybe the parents were, um, directly involved with the trauma of the student. That puts you folks in a little bit of a of a unique situation. Um, but I I think some good questions. I don't know if you had heard our previous discussion about it. Was it two months ago we were talking about this? So that I thought, once that was brought up, it it actually kind of hurt a little bit of interest in on my end to to see how that would look. Um, because I I think it's important that the parents are involved.
Understood. Yeah.
Uh, unfortunately, it's a board meeting at this time, so there isn't an opportunity, but we do have, um, a sign up for citizen comments at the end of the meeting today. Um, if there's additional comments, you'd like.
I should have mentioned that I'm a life or a clinical social worker and technically answer this question.
Okay. And per- and perhaps that's something you could even email the entire board, um, at a later time. That would be great. That's okay. Thank you.
I don't either. Can I phone a friend?
If I can follow up on what Mr. Kushtert asked, um, it, so I think the question I had asked last time is, assuming that there's no parental, direct parental involvement in in causing the trauma, are that it it would it be the standard that the parents would be notified?
I'm not sure. I I can understand the issue. Uh, I think us being transparent, um, uh, I again, that's a, you bring up a valid point. Um, it's not in any of the material as far as that that specific, um, uh, direction. Um, so I I can't answer that. I'd have to contact the individual agencies and school districts on how they do it and how they handle that. Um, I'd have to do a little more research on that.
Um, I just, I just want to say that, um, I really appreciate the relationship and partnership that we have with with the police department, and that we see that kids are not isolated. What happens in one setting impacts kids in another. Um, I think the the method of keeping it very narrow as to what the school will know just puts, um, our professionals to be alerted so that we can be sure that the kids are getting the supports they need. But I re- I think the one of the things I love about D three oh three and all the government agencies that we work with is we really put kids first and we put them together. So thank you for putting this together as, um, Mrs. Bell talked about, the document and the PowerPoint you put together for us. It was really helpful. I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional comments at this time?
I have a couple more questions.
Absolutely.
Some for you, Officer Majewski, and some for, I think, for Dr. Gordon. Um, the the first is, um, kind of a technical one. At whose discretion at Saint Charles P D is the notification decision made? Who makes that call?
Would be basically based on the policy that I read. Uh, so let's say we were to enact the policy, uh, any of those circumstances that I mentioned, um, would fit, uh, our criteria. Again, and if we were notified that a child was involved, and again, uh, and that's not, we're not gonna go out of our way to see if a child is involved. If we go to a domestic and adults are arguing, we don't see any children present. We're not gonna look in rooms to see if they go to the school. Again, it's only if it's plainly obvious if if the child is involved in the incident. Um, again, uh, car accidents, overdoses. Uh, it's not necessarily just domestic incidents. I I think, I don't know if that's kind of, I understand that's a, you know, uh, that's a lot of private information. We do respond to a lot of domestic situations, but that's not the only kind of situation uh, we would be, uh, responding to, but it would just be kind of our generic criteria that I laid out. Uh, and again, if we, um, responded to a situation and, um, you know, we were unaware that a child was involved, and then obviously we're not gonna make any notification or try to dig deeper to see if a child is involved. It's only again, if it's plainly obvious, uh, where a child is impact, witnessed some sort of incident. Again, sibling in a car accident, overdose, uh, you know, I kind of named some of the instances involved. Um, and again, if, uh, um, if we come upon a situation where, you know, a child was involved that we didn't know, I think, you know, we're not gonna go out of our way to notify. And and again, the message is just very generic. It's Handle With Care. If the child doesn't present or act abnormal, no one would, no one would know, but I do understand the issue with the privacy, uh, with the parents being notified. I I think, um, again, I'd have to explore how the other agencies are doing it. I I don't think it would be a problem for our officers to say, you know, here's what we plan on doing. Here's our protocol. If we were to explain that to a family member or victim and and, um, you know, explain the circumstance and and, you know, if they were, you know, adamant to not having us do that, fine, or if they were like, yeah, go ahead. It sounds like, you know, um, then then I think that's something we we could explore.
And I think I think this question, I think, is for Dr. Gordon. What what do we expect the district to do upon receipt of these notifications? And and I'm I'm really particularly interested in what we expect teachers to do.
Yeah, I I think it goes to what Deputy Chief said. I think it's an awareness factor first. Second, it's if a a young person is showing some signs of trauma or struggle or concern that we engage with them like we would, uh, when a, if a child was showing signs. It just gives us a little bit more of a heads up that this young person has encountered something within their life. So what would that look like for a classroom teacher being able to, um, ha- have, making sure that the young person is okay, potentially reaching out to the principal or, uh, social works, uh, counselor, social work counselors within our schools to make sure the the student i- is okay and feeling okay about where they're at, and if they want to have any further conversations about it, it really is just that checking in and making sure our kids are okay.
I'll have a follow-up question to that as well. Um, and thank you for that, because I was wondering, you know, what is our role in all of this? What what as teachers, administrators, board, what what is it that we're supposed to do with this information, especially if there's a lot of ambiguity as to what the situation was? We don't really know what happened. And I start to think a little bit about the fact that, you know, educators are really caring people, right? They're they're gonna want to figure out if this child is okay. And so I I had similar questions as to what is the protocol, uh, and how many individuals would necessarily know, right? If this is a high school student with a half dozen different instructors that they see throughout a day, if there's an elementary school student, right? They're they're traditional daily teacher. So I I wonder that as well. What are we supposed to do? And and again, caring people are gonna be like, hey, Suzie, Billy, are you okay? You know, I'm I'm seeing you're a little off today. And so I just wonder if there would be some a bit of probing there, naturally so because they're caring individuals. And then perhaps the child is unwilling to speak about the circumstances. So I I think a couple of the questions a couple of months ago really started to pop up in my brain as we as we talked a little bit about this, and there could be some unforeseen outcomes to something that is intended to be really helpful, right, with great intentions.
I think it's really important that we follow the protocols that are set, that it's not for the staff to to be probing. It is for, i- if the student comes forward, if the student is showing some obvious signs, uh, of trauma and impact from the situation. It's not for us to to go beyond that and really follow what's laid out and what's worked, uh, for other police departments and school districts in the past.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McNally.
I I have general support for the idea. I I like the idea. Um, what, again, what Mr. Kushtert said brought something else, right? As a teacher for, like, for most of my, all of my career, really, I I've, if I see a kid is off, I'll say something. Now, I will pull the kid and say, everything okay? Do you need to talk to somebody? I've done that. Um, and this, in in one sense, it almost sounds like I shouldn't do that if it's a Handle With Care kid. And that that's a lack of clarity for me as as well. They're like, all right, this is a kid. I received this memo. Normally, I would see a kid that's a little bit acting a little differently. Am I supposed to say nothing now and just kind of call in a professional or what do I do?
Yeah, so what I heard was if a young person is displaying so some behaviors that that may be a little different than typical. I think it is absolutely what I heard is it is okay to engage, um, and make sure they have the proper support because that's that's the whole idea behind this. Somewhere in this young person's life in the last probably twenty-four hours, something pretty significant, as as Deputy Chief read off, those are pretty significant events in a young person's life, uh, to be dealing with things, and they probably will be showing some some signs of of struggle. Potentially not. But yeah, I I don't wanna, uh, I think your scenario is a good one to make sure that we have clarity on.
Yeah.
For our educators.
Yeah, I don't, I just don't want somebody to, uh, to have fallen afoul of, hey, this is an agreement we had, and you didn't do that because you did what you would have typically done.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McNally. Any other comments, questions?
Just a thank you. You've been wonderful to work with, and we we know you have the best intentions for our students and and everybody at the staff, and you're a fantastic representation of the department, and thanks for all your hard work to keep everybody safe.
Thank you.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Deputy Chief, thank you so much. Okay, I've got a few other updates. Um, the district recently updated our emergency response protocols in partnership with the Saint Charles Police and all the other different, uh, police agencies, uh, that serve D three oh three. Um, we worked within our safety committee, uh, which board members sit on to really change some of the the language in our current practices. Currently, or prior to April seventh, we had the term lockout. We've changed that to two terms around secure and hold to eliminate confusion because there was lockout and lockdown and just the confusion. We're also, uh, en- engaged with a with a national organization that probably many of you have heard of. I love you guys. Um, it's a well-researched, well-thought-through protocol um, that the Saint Charles Police and our other police agencies support and work through. So we're implementing that subtle change right now in all of our schools because of language and confusion. Uh, we don't want there to be any confusion when we're using terminology such as lockdown. So lockout will not be a terminology, a a piece of the terminology we use anymore. It'll be either secure and hold, which mean very different things. Um, our online returning student registration will open at the end of the month. This is really i- important for our families. We're gonna be sending out some reminder postcards. New to our registration process year, we're requesting all transportation-eligible families to complete a brief survey to support route development inefficiencies. Uh, families will have to indicate whether or not their child will require morning bus services if they live, um, outside of the the lock zone. Um, afternoon bus service or no bus service. Please be on the lookout for the later this month. This will really help ensure that we have even more efficient transportation services. As you know, throughout the nation, but right here in D three oh three, there is a a very large lack of bus drivers and and other e- employees in the in that field. So we're trying to make sure that we have the most efficient routes and by our families communicating with us their need for those services, uh, this will help greatly. Next, uh, the King County Educator of the Year Ceremony will take place on Friday, May fifth. District three oh three has four nominees. Michael Joseph Smith from Davis Elementary, a P E teacher, Neil Curry from East High School, social studies teacher, Jim Richter, East High School principal, uh, Carrie Ann Posey over at North High School, an English teacher, all have been nominated. Uh, so we wish them good luck and as they seek to become, uh, King County Educator of the Year, uh, nominee. Next, we have our data dashboard, uh, community members who listen and follow along with us, and our board member know that each month we update our data dashboard, which will be posted tomorrow. Um, at this time, the academic ones are are stagnant. The operation continue to move in a positive direction around operating cash exactly where we would anticipate it to be. Our network uptime continues to be outstanding, and same with our facility access. Attendance continues to be, it is very consistent, uh, month after month, a- as well as our discipline referrals. Those were the other two areas, uh, that we were monitoring on this report. Again, it will be uploaded, uh, tomorrow, uh, for our community members to see that. Uh, one other great point of fried pride, uh, last Friday, uh, crossed our district, uh, from E C through high school. Educators were working on developing the priority standards, uh, that will be attached to each grade level. Um, our principals, teacher leaders just did a phenomenal job. Our learning teaching team led by Dr. Christine Igo just set the the table exceptionally well. A lot of hard work went into Friday, and then our principals and our teachers really brought it home. This is an important aspect of where we're going as an organization, having great clarity of what is that rigorous outcome at each grade level? That first grade is first grade in our our district, no matter which school you go to, and the outcomes we're expecting that our students from from E C, from early childhood all the way through high school, that we we have that high rigorous bar, but that our educators are are integral in making these decisions around these priority standards. For us, the priority standards, there's about eight to fourteen uh, within each, uh, content area, and really relying on the experts, uh, to come in and and have conversations about what our students should know, understand, and be able to do. These are those standards that we're gonna guarantee that by the time a student is done by that with that grade level or course that these standards are known by our students. Again, it's really laying the foundation that you will see here shortly in our strategic plan. This work will will absolutely inform our our strategic plan, um, and the work we're doing. So we're really excited about it. But the main point of this was to thank our educators throughout D three oh three, to, uh, thank our learning and teaching team, uh, again, led by Christine Igo for all of the effort and all the work that went into yesterday, and this is work that's gonna continue moving forward over the next, uh, few weeks and months as we finalize this grouping of priority standards. All right. Next up, if we could throw the strategic plan update on. Board, uh, a lot of this, you're gonna see, that's very familiar. It was literally a three ten, uh, twenty-three, so literally thirty some odd days ago, thirty days ago, that we were here giving you an update. So you're going to see some very similar language, not a whole lot has changed, but what has? We threw in uh the thought exchange. So one of the pieces that we're into is the feedback loops, making sure that we're really get some great feedback by our educators. As you can see, uh, that we had about eight hundred and forty four participants. And again, with thought exchange, we had seven hundred and twenty five thoughts, twenty three thousand ratings uh occurred. I apologize, I went, I don't have the clicker, so I'm just like rocking and rolling here. So there's our committee members. Yeah, 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 that is true. So our great committee members, and they will keep moving. The feedback loop I I just spoke about. And then one more, here we go. Eight hundred and forty four participants, uh, seven hundred and twenty five thoughts, twenty three thousand ratings. Um, with that, each person's rated about tw- twenty seven point six uh different thoughts. So our our people who participated in this really spent a lot of time engaging in this conversation. Again, our theory of action, the di- district office will be doing this work. Our principals then would be engaging in this level of work, our teachers here and our students there. Really, this idea that we're all in this, all aspects of the organization are working to improve the outcomes of our students. So one of the things that we did was a Likert scale um where we were looking for, how do different statements, the values and others resonate with uh the staff? So you can see here for our commitment statement, seventy six percent agreed. Uh, for us, it was really right around that seventy five percent threshold, which is pretty high threshold. In this world of ours, to have seventy five percent of people to agree on something is pretty amazing. Uh, so we're taking our seventy six percent and and feeling really good about where we're at with that commitment statement. Again, I gotta praise our our strategic plan team. We've really worked hard as a collective group to get where we're we're heading. So our commitment together, building pathways to excellence. Again, this is this idea around collaboration, coming together, that we recognize our students have multiple pathways uh towards their excellence, that it doesn't have to be one set way only, but there are many different ways towards excellence. But we do expect and hold accountable that there is excellence within our organization. So here are the feedback on the values. The belonging, eighty nine percent agreement on the the uh belonging in the belonging definition. I'm going to move pretty quickly here, perseverance, ninety percent agreement. Uh, the achievement eighty six percent agreement. So here are the the core values. What you saw through the Likert scale was that we have high connection with these values, the definitions, uh, the the values themselves that the board selected and the board helped craft the the language around these. The staff absolutely connected with these values that we'll be using uh throughout our organization. Here are strategic priorities. Effective collaboration, seventy eight percent. Instructional coherence, seventy six percent. And culture of dignity, eighty one percent. Here are the strategic priorities and their definitions. Again, great connection to these strategic priorities, the definitions and the work we're doing. Uh, this gives us that feedback loop from staff that we're in the right space. We're doing the right work. We're we're really connecting with our organization and getting that type of feedback. These are those outcomes that fit underneath uh the strategic priorities, as you can see here. Okay. Okay, the success indicators, this is not where we hit it out of the park. This is uh where where we showed some, uh, I I think the the overall success indicators were somewhere around fifty nine percent. Fifty one percent gave myself a little too much credit, uh, fifty one percent. Uh, just i- it just wasn't there for them. And then as we really dove into the comments, um, it it really, what people were telling us, i- it didn't feel connected to the whole organization yet from an E C, because again, we're an E C through transition uh school district and for our staff, they really did not feel like our success indicators were were right spot on. So again, the strategic plant team then takes that information and then works really hard to uh think about different indicators that would lead to a district um demonstrating success. So these were the prior, just to remind you. And where we moved to were the A B Cs of school success uh in in post-secondary. So we dove deeply, and I mean deeply, into the research around what are, what are those measurements? Kind of that, what's that, what are healthy school districts doing? And what it does the research say that we need to be looking for? So it really came down to three large overarching topics, attendance, behavior, course content and grades. That course content a around the grades that students are getting, but also at the high school level, uh, the type of courses, the rigorous courses students are taking. So we know when students attend school, ninety five percent are the grader. We have, we can see some really big improvements later on because our kids are coming to school. It makes sense. You show up. We educate incredibly well. We think about our priority standards that I spoke about earlier, where we have high rigorous outcomes for our students. If you show up, it matters. Uh, and and we continue to grow our students. For our behavior, it was having two or few major referrals in a year. That, again, from E C through high school, it's really clear in E C, it looks a little bit different. It's like self-regulation, being able to notice self and having been able to pay attention uh to to self and and what's happening around. Course content and grades, this one has been fascinating. Because even when we put out the the beer better or uh three point O G P A in our previous one, we had tons and tons of comments around, this is going to just create grade inflation. This is how you were going to do this. So Christine and I really just dove even deeper into the research time and time and time and time and time again. The three point O and G P A stays consistent. It is a better indicator than any assessment. And and we dug, we were like, okay, this this can't be continuously be this consistent, and it is. In addition, like I said earlier, at the high school, it's a game changer when kids are taking A P dual credit courses. For when students do that and they pass that class successfully, their ability to go on to college and graduate within four years, the the percentages are are just. I mean, i- it really is absolutely stunning to see when you put all these things together. We really start making a significant difference in the lives of all of our students. So the A B Cs of school success is really where our team, the the strategic planning team really went back to.
Uh, Dr. Gordon Freeman. Couple of thoughts, one, um, nice to see that two of the um measures that you have reflected on this slide are also in the dashboard already in terms of little different take on some of the behavior measures, but certainly that one's present. And the attendance measure is certainly present on that dashboard. So good that you're tracking those on an ongoing basis. How did the committee discuss um these goals, particularly course content and grades relative to the goals that the board's already adopted and that are reflected in the student achievement report? What was that discussion like?
It was a healthy conversation as as my two board members can a- attest to. Really just going back and forth and Christine and others uh in the room really around. What does that grade look like? Because there was some of that conversation around it, are, is there grade inflation? Or do these grades actually connect and tell the real story? Because there's also this idea around the assessment, the assessment be it um S A T or uh I A R are 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 better indicators and people, we were talking about that quite a bit. So that's where we wanted to go back to the research, but what does the research say? Because oftentimes we believe something, but we wanted to dig back into the research that said, well, I can have that belief. But i- it really was about what what we want to set our organization up through research that says if you do these pieces. So that was a lion's share of the conversation was going back and forth around a success indicator like S A T. You know, being a eleven, twelve hundred, wherever that number is that we would set. But we went back a- as the team to look at and say, is there a correlation between S A T or any other uh assessment and long-term success for students? And again, it kept coming back to G P A. That is a better indicator than any of the other ones. And again, then I'll throw on the A P dual credit where they saw there was this rigorous opportunity. And where our team talked about was really trying to make sure that the vast majority of our students are trying at least one A P or dual credit for the rigorous outcomes that we're looking for. Um, because that's a different level for our students. Christine, anything that you would add on that?
No, I I think that was absolutely the conversation. And I think where we started, where people were not necessarily there. They, last Thursday, were like, the research is clear. This is, this is um really what's being reflected. And I would say in terms of what we've already have in those, actually, all of these things, with the exception of the behavior, are already on our on our chart that we're more measuring, that we've been measuring over time.
So it was nice to see that that the work that we've we've done on the data dashboard continues to be reflected in the research and continued to be reflected in our strategic plan. So if I can, I'm just gonna, oh, just click over to the next page because they'll show and then, oh, no, that's not the one I wanted, sorry, just leave it. Yeah.
So if I can jump in, I I was one who had the concern uh regarding uh the potential for grade inflation, not that necessary grade inflation is occurring widespread or anything like that. But that the concern I had was that the potential for this to lead to great inflation. I'm not opposed to the idea of saying, let's work toward every student having a having a three point O, obviously, that's. Um, I just want to make sure that continues to mean something. Um, then part of my conversation was spurred by uh by concerns I've had expressed by parents regard or surrounding A P programs. And you know, the grades they've gotten there and hoping that those are going to be reflective of performance on the A P tests and so.
Yeah, that's good.
So just to follow up on that, Mr. McNally, so how uh did you, did the team review or their mitigants in the research to account for grade inflation? Because it is real, it it does happen in our country, or how did, how did you?
Well, the approach, the the concern I had, I I just, a- as an example, I, I know, I'm proud to acknowledge that I have a son who went to college with fifty one A P credits that he earned, which I'm not just proud, I'm financially happy about it too. Um, but um, I've had other parents tell me, I've, you know, my my child received A's and B's in all the A P classes and but ended up not getting any college credit because they scored twos. So that was where the concern I had is I I just, what I don't want to have, I want that B to continue to mean a B. I want it to continue to mean a three point O. And and so there's, um, again, having been in the profession for a long time, I have, I have seen that sometimes um grades are earned uh by edict or perceived edict. And so I just want to make sure that that doesn't occur.
So one of the the really great things about what we're trying to do here in D three O three is really transform the entire system. And what I talked about earlier really layers into this conversation. So the the uh priority standards, those pieces are are critical for us when we're thinking about these grades. When we're thinking about how do we assess students should be on these priority standards? The other piece that we will have a- in the coming time is having common formative assessments where we collectively agree that this is the bar, this is the standard in which we hold. Because I think there is those pieces in there. However, these next three slides, I didn't just make up this. Nor to Christine, just want you to see. And I had to stop because this keeps going on. I'm telling you, we were trying to poke holes in our own. I I in this idea like, because the team was pushing back pretty hard, like, is this, is there a better way? And we're like, this is what the research tells us is what works for a district to say, is this a healthy organization? Is this an organization that's growing and achieving? And what will this do for students? Ultimately, that's the point here. Um, next slide, Christine.
I actually, I have a question about. So the three point O, is that on a four point O scale? Because.
Uh, yeah, that's on the traditional four point scale, so we will make sure that that it will be adjusted for the five point scale. Yeah, correct. I guess so.
And to be clear, to be clear, regardless of of even that, I I I'm, I am at no point opposed to the idea of saying you need to maintain a three point O. I I'm not opposed to that. I I, again, it was, that was just the concern I I had. And I think a- as you say, I know, I know you presented even in the first meeting, there was a lot of uh, there was talk about the research, so. I'm in support of the idea of of maintaining maintaining a high G P A. I just, again, want to make sure that it that it continues to have the meaning.
I have two questions. So I assume that that is at the high school level, not middle school?
We'll, we'll get there, we'll get there. I'll show you a slide here.
Anything, okay.
Don't assume anything.
Okay, and I, then I'm going to ask that about elementary.
Don't assume anything.
All right, um, and we'll have a conversation about.
We'll have a conversation.
Could you please look um on the success indicators? There's a, I, it might just be a typo. I don't understand the proficiency of literacy and.
That's the old one, so don't worry about that one.
Okay, good, okay. I didn't understand what that was.
Okay, so again, just highlighting the the primary and intermediate learners research. Uh, when we're seeing the math ability at at school entry predicts later math achievement. And this goes to some of our staff members and rightfully so, feeling like that there were some pieces left out within our success indicators. And our success indicators that I'll show you here in a half a second or two really take into account E C all the way through high school now. So but across the board, um, we know that this work, that these indicators really do matter. I think I'd highlight the first bullet here, grades are much better predictors of future performance and indicators that are considered more objective such as test scores. Yeah, it 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 just continues to play itself out. Um, no matter the researcher, no matter who's doing this, a lot of this work came out of University of Chicago um and all of their studies. And again, it, th- they spend time for years studying young people and what's working, what's not working. So here are those success indicators. Just let you absorb that for a second. So even at E C, it is absolutely critical that our three and four year olds are starting to work with number sense, starting to really understand foundational literacy. They see the pull-through from three and four year olds when they're proficient in these areas. They pull through all the way through eighth grade. So there's a a huge seminal study around uh early childhood. They follow these young people from three-year-old all the way through eighth grade. That's where this data comes from for our E C students. Again, it's very similar. The students needed to show up. You have to be there. The behaviors, this is that one around uh self-regulation and intention skills. They look a little bit different when they're three, four, five, six, seven, and we're working on some of those pieces. But what we would monitor is the percent of students with all three indicators in the E C. That's what we'd come back to the board saying, we have eighty five percent of our students, making up a number, that are meeting these these outcomes. The intermediate learners see those pieces. You start being able to have a students be able to have a sense of of belonging and be able to report on that. Students have two or less major discipline referrals, the content, again, students proficient in math and literacy. The content, again, students proficient in math and literacy. Where before we had third grade, it was just the third grade reading. We know how important that is. But we also recognize there are some other important indicators in math and literacy. See, the middle school piece continues. And then we move into that B average. And really, when they were talking about it at the middle and high school, that B averages in core content area. Those there, there was a key indicator within those. And then, again, in the high school, it's the B average plus earn one or more AP dual credits and or industry credits. Those are those are key to to that long term success. All right, now I'll turn it back over to to the board.
I have a couple of couple of questions. One, one's quite technical on this slide. What's the definition of proficient in EC to three and four to five? So what's the measure of proficiency?
Correct, those will be on those standards, that the proficiency standards that we're defining for our students in the area of literacy and numeracy. The other one is also our younger students do take the I ready. So we'll have those aspects as well.
Yep, so maybe I'm being unclear with the question, so I'll try again. What specific measure determines whether a student is proficient or not proficient?
So we it would be the the common assessments that our educators develop, which would, again, align to the state standards in those areas.
So is that a grade or is it a test or is it something to be determined in the future?
That piece for the EC piece, it will be that assessment of those standards through that assessment system. Does that make sense, Christine, am I?
I think the question, Mr. Lachner, and correct me if I'm wrong, really is around, how will we know that they're actually proficient? And we're taught, part of our process is we're going to identify those priority standards. Once we have those priority standards, we're on track for that. We then say, what does success look like? And so we all decide that when a student is able to do this, that means they have success. Now, it's still something that we're working through. What does it look like at early childhood, first, second, and third grade? When they get into kindergarten and up, we could look at I ready if we chose to, or we could say we're actually going to lean into our formative assessments to lean that work out. I think as we continue to build this system, we're going to be coming back to, here's what we think is the best way to do that. Currently at EC, we utilize like a portfolio system where we're watching our kids making progress and we're tracking. And then we've got three pieces of evidence that say we saw them do that skill. You know, three times consistently, we're going to say they've got that skill. Am I helping?
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
We have another mechanism for measuring that called IAR. That's aligned to all the standards as well. And it tests those standards. So I'm trying to understand where we've spoken in the past about IAR and percentages achieving proficiency on IAR as the measure. Why the shift and and just trying to understand the move here?
The research is pretty clear on the the grades, those students, how are they performing on our internal measurement?
And I think it gives us an opportunity. I think the teachers, I think some of the feedback we heard was and was like, well, you're not doing it like I don't matter in kindergarten, first and second grade. And we were trying to say, but you do matter. The work that you're doing there is setting kids up for that IAR success. And then the research was really supporting us in our thinking kind of along those lines of like, there are things that need to be happening in these with these younger friends, and we should be making sure we're processing that as well.
Can I just jump in for a second? Are you? So we're, if I heard the question, are we saying we aren't going to count IAR as part of our proficiency to the standards? That's third through eighth grade. So we're, are you suggesting that we're going to ignore it? Well, I might have a little problem with that, but.
Probably not the right, but yes, we are saying. That the the research suggests that we should be looking at the day to day work.
I totally hear you on that and agree. But my my knowledge is that it's very hard to standardize for teachers kids hitting that component. I totally believe in common formative and common summer summative assessments. But if we're trying to change this system, you can't just stop. You have to, I I know you know.
We'll still continue to have the the student achievement report those aspects to it. But again, this is that feeling that was so hard in the strategic planning group. I feel like that's a better measurement because that's what you're saying to me.
I'm not saying that.
Oh, that's what I heard.
Because I was the director of student assessment for the entire state. So I do know, and I know that there are lots of validation, all that stuff goes into it. My concern is, are we ready as a district from classroom to classroom to school to school to be able to hit the target of proficiency? That takes that takes.
That's fair.
That's fair.
And so I would hope if you're headed, if you're heading us in that direction, we're not going to ignore something we have to hang on to in order.
To get to the.
To get to that.
And again, we are still in the feedback loop.
And I have a question that's kind of ancillary to all this. When we talk about these success indicators, and these are predictors of of future success, what is that? How how are we, we're talking about right now, how we're defining its success within the building, within their progression through? When we talk about future success, how is that defined? When we talk about these studies indicating?
So these are all about students. You know, Mr. Lachner has pointed out at a number of times, eighty five percent of our students go to college. So these studies are students who who are becoming successful in their post secondary careers that these students demonstrate the greatest amount of academic success in those.
Complete the college in X number of years or.
Where four years, when you're taking these AP courses, you're completing that core college course sooner than other students who did not participate there, which there is an economic impact for our families and for students across the board. But that that's that long term trajectory. What does it look like at primary school? Why are we using these? Because these inform our four, five, six, eight groupings. So each one of these inform the next group to to get to that ultimate goal. Because again, eighty five percent of our students are currently going to college. We want to continue to make sure. Our goal is to make sure each kid has an opportunity to open up whatever door they wish to open. If that's a college door, we want them to be able to go to to college and be able to do everything they want to. If they want to go right into the workforce, I want them to have been able to make that choice to have gone into the workforce as opposed to being able to be forced to go into that. The other piece is, we want to continue working on not having students have to take remedial courses in college. These pieces all layer into that because every time a D three O three student takes remedial course, that's money that they're just spending on a course that does not earn a credit for us. So that's where all this research layers into. But I absolutely hear your point. Are we ready yet? So that may be a piece that we bring back and say, we may layer in an IAR or proficiency scale within there until we're we're all up and running.
And my next question then may be ancillary to Mrs. McCabe's, which is if we're using, I'm I'm not sure what term to use, but kind of internal measures. How are we going to then do longitudinal compared with past cohorts or past groups? As well as other schools, other districts?
Yeah, I think you're still, again, we're not doing away with the student achievement report. But this is a, this, the success indicators really are the overall effectiveness of D three O three. That's the idea of this. Are we an effective school district producing young people who who are successful in that post secondary life? And that's really what we're looking for.
I'll just chime in here for just a moment because most of what I said was already asked, so great questions. I I know there's been a lot of work and we've discussed this, a lot of learning and teaching on uniformity of processes, how we assess, how we grade, how we deliver material, avoiding those silo effects. So I appreciate that. But I I think Mrs. McCabe and others brought up some good points here. You know, as when I used to review transcripts for a living, right? Collegiate transcript or high school transcripts as students were college bound. You would see a huge difference between sometimes students' performance academically, meaning GPA wise, and then their standardized assessments. So I guess this is more food for thought. How do we wrestle with that notion of students who are performing very well by GPA standards, but their scores on standardized assessments are well below what you would anticipate based off of that academic performance? And I and I would suppose the alternate would be possible as well, although less likely. So I think the question of when will the, when will we be ready to do that? And I think a little bit of a focus on alignment between those standards, right? We've talked about this from an AP perspective, student grades based off of their corresponding score on an AP examination, right? If students are getting A's and twos, there's some misalignment there. I don't know exactly what it is, but they're certainly not aligned by college board standards. So I think I see a similar challenge with this. I know we're working hard on it. So just a little bit more food for thought that we may be wise to align those first and make sure that students are performing well on both. And then perhaps we can move forward. But I I do appreciate a ton of research has been done on this.
And to clarify, you're saying, well, and and essentially our internals as well as like the IAR or.
Right, I'd love to see those students performing even better, right? On those IAR standards because of the uniformity of processes that we're doing. And I know that you're working a lot on that.
Yeah, I'm. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
But I I was kind of just to follow up to that. I are we saying we're going to throw out looking at the SAT scoring and how we're doing?
We're not throwing anything out. We're just saying that these are the success indicators for our strategic plan.
Okay, because there is, at least today, in the current structure for a lot of university, there is an economic impact to how our students perform relative to the SAT. So I wouldn't want to lose sight of that. And I would, to echo Mr. Lachner's, I'm still not clear on how we are going to evaluate proficiency through fifth grade. So I I think they're probably, it would be worth having more discussion with the board and what I'm hearing to understand what that looks like and how does that become consistent? And then, again, I would go back to, I'm not sure I'm clear on how we will ensure that we don't have grade inflation as we move into middle school and high school, which again, also illustrates what Mr. Kusian talked about.
We can bring those pieces back to you.
This is really good, hard work. This is, this is significant work. If I'm thinking that about elementary, because that's more what I know, and how teachers are going to be able to know whether a kid actually hits the standard. That isn't just looking at test scores, because yes, the IAR is a year, it's an autopsy, it's after the fact, but during the whole school year, so that they can report to the parents authentically that the kids have hit those targets. And to and as a board, we can say to our community, our kids are really successful. But that's really hard work. There's a lot of work ahead. And just to acknowledge that.
And I do want to put just a couple of things in in place and or thinking as we kind of approach our process. So as we identified and worked through this idea of priority standards, the idea is, once we have these priority standards and we're teaching, those scores are going to go up. Because one of the things that we did was we said, one of the things we took was we literally took the IAR and the SAT and said, how is, what's being tested? How often is it being tested? What does it look like to identify what the priority is? So they are all connected. But what we liked about this was it would give us that opportunity, like where we can make in the moment changes to what we're doing because we'll have that ongoing feedback. Kids are with us, they're with us, ooh, yikes, they're not with us, let's go back and fix. It's hard to do that when we get scores in June and the kids aren't with us anymore.
And and to interrupt, if somebody was going to say something, this will be across all content. Because we don't do the IAR for art and we don't do the IAR for culinary. So I assume every content person is looking at their standards.
Yeah, I had a great conversation with some music high school teachers on Friday, just along those lines of like, but I'm not on the SAT. And I said, you're right. However, we do know kids who have this opportunity for visual or performing arts do much better. And then this is our opportunity to say, what do we want kids to look like? And we had, we had a great conversation. So yes, it will be all of them.
And this align, these align with Illinois standards, right? That goes without.
Without, we start, what we did is we literally copied those Illinois standards for teachers and said, here are the standards. Now we took the IAR for them and we said, or the SAT, depending on where they were, and said, so this standard covers twenty four percent of the test. This standard is two percent of the test. This standard is eight percent of the test. So they got a good feel for how and where are kids being tested on each of those standards. Thank you.
Two things I wanted to just point out from being board member that sits on this committee and hearing the discussions, Ed and I have that extra benefit is this is a five year plan. So this isn't, it's not that this is a goal to reach to in the in the distant future. That's not what I mean by this is a five year plan. This is something that we are going to work towards as an organization. This is, this is a plan, not a this happens tomorrow. And the other thing was that I think it ties really nicely when we're talking about proficiency. To your point, Joe, is that we're talking about a guaranteed and viable curriculum. And then that, when when that's being insured through L and T and with the increase in PLC and the more direct effective PLC work, that's going to align teacher to teacher in a better way than it ever has in the past. And so that will, that will lean towards making this very consistent or as consistent as possible because a student will be proficient in one class at one school. And then it would be the same virtually because we're having the exact same curriculum being taught. So once that happens, this will be much more straightforward as far as trying to identify a student that is proficient, so to speak. And what does that look like? That is not just saying, well, teacher A thinks Suzie is proficient and she may or may not be in a different class. And it's, it won't be like that because we're going to be aligning all the classes, all of the curriculum. And so in the progress of that, that's where this is in the big picture. So I know it, we all struggled with that for sure when we were discussing it. But it to look at all the data and all the the research that goes behind this, it makes a lot more sense when you understand the whole picture. Nobody's doing away with the SAT scores. We all want to see those.
Now, I'm appreciative of the of the short term, essentially what would be, you know, short term indicators that can give real time data. That's, that's a good thing. And I think that they they can become short term indicators for things like the IAR as long as we continue to use those, take those seriously and and not that we wouldn't. And it sounds like that's the plan. This is, this is the idea, though, that if we're, that if we're doing, using these in a year, in two years, if we don't see the kind of movement we're hoping for, do we have a plan for, you know, kind of righting that ship? If should this not be providing that data that we need on those standardized tests?
We, this is a living, breathing document. This is not a document that's going to sit on anybody's shelf anywhere. We're doing this hard work to impact the lives of young people. I take this work more seriously. This, this is, this is the work. It's why we dive into research. What's worked? Again, not my hopes, not my feelings, not my wants. It's what is hundreds of pieces of research, not two, not five, literally hundreds of pieces of research telling us should be the success indicators for our organization. So what we would always do, we're going to be incredibly responsive. We're going to continue moving underneath this, the next piece on our next slides are really those next steps. Some of the next steps are really around those action steps. What does that look like? When we're trying to develop this behind the scenes? How do we support having attendance? How do we support behavior? How do we support more students having rigorous courses? I I want to hearken back to way back in August, September, when we had an equity report that came to the board who said, board, one of those groups came to the board and said, there's an inconsistency of rigor occurring in your district. That is why you have an inconsistent outcomes for young people. What we're saying is, we want to eliminate that inconsistencies. We're not going to be perfect on day one. That 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 won't happen, but we're going to keep getting better because of days like Friday, because of educators stepping to the plate to make a difference, to own this work, to own these standards, to understand these standards, to pull back these standards and really have a grasp of what is expected of me each and every day. And then for our organization to be supporting our principles and our. And then for our organization to be supporting our principals and our, our, our staff, that we're all collectively working together on this plan. By no means is this a, a, a bookshelf plan. This is a living, breathing, we're working this thing. We work it and we work it because it's not always going to be perfect. It's going to be working with people. We're a with organization. That's the other thing. We stand next to teachers, we stand next to our leaders, we stand next to our staff because things are going to struggle at times. And we're going to need to lean into our educators and say, why didn't that work? What happened there? Why, why did that occur? And really listening. And I think that's what this feedback loop was, just as this was too. This is a really important feedback loop, helping us think about what are those best indicators? But when things aren't working, and I'll tell you, there will be some components of this plan. Um, what that looks like, sounds like, feels like. It, it is a lot of work and a lot of time and energy goes into this for the. Academic and behavioral outcomes of, of our kids. But we do that by supporting principals of our staff. They're really hard work, hopping off my soapbox. We're good. All right, I think that is the longest superintendent's report since I've been here. So I'll hand it back over to you.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to board members, uh, committee reports. Uh, can we start with, um, learning and teaching?
We sure can. Okay, let me just pull up my notes here real quickly.
No problem.
All right, so learning and teaching met a long, long time ago last Monday. And, uh, we had, uh, I, as, uh, folks have mentioned before, please do, uh, feel free to go and look at the archive conversations. We did have a lot of robust discussions, some great questions. We've turned these into more of working committee sessions. So there's usually a lot of great discussion for you to go and review. Um, so just a, a brief synopsis of what we did. Dr. Igo and team came and gave us an early childhood update. Again, a really ro- robust discussion about the, the keys and benefits of our early childhood program. So kind of a high-level overview, um, high-quality early childhood programs and, and how they increase future academic success for students. That's really loud, isn't it? Okay, let me back up. Society, uh, the benefits economically from these preschool students and their performance levels. Um, some of the components of high-quality early childhood programs that we discussed. Um, to read the benefits, research indicates that these programs need to include qualified and appropriately compensated personnel, of course, great talent, small group sizes, high adult-child ratios, language-rich environment, develop me, developmentally appropriate curriculum, safe physical setting, and warm and responsive adult childhood interactions. We also had a nice discussion regarding the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. So, uh, maybe some of us board members and some of the community weren't exactly clear as to the service that is required for, for folks within this designation, ages between three and 22. So there's some, uh, with some good discussion regarding a least restrictive environment, the continuum of servants, services, which is comprised of 70, 70%, no more than 70% of students with IEPs and 30% of students with IEPs. See, a little bit more regarding the District 303 Early Childhood Services. Um, those services are provided at Fox Ridge Early Childhood Center, including developmental screening, screenings, classrooms, family engagement and support, and community playgroups. The least restrictive environment under IDEA. Uh, services require, serves these three student groups. So early childhood student or special education, ECSE is, is the acronym. Preschool for all. And then community for students who have, um, not been identified for IEP or preschool for all services, family pay tuition for those students to participate. Overall, the capacity for that program is somewhere between 340 and 350 students. Uh, there was some discussion regarding centralized early childhood programming regarding, or, or in, in, um, comparison with multiple elementary buildings. There's a nice breakdown, our chief communication officer just have a breaking down these meetings. So that is also available on the board website where you can see the differences and kind of the pros of each. And then the presentation is also available. We then moved on to a nice discussion regarding the middle school ELA. So the English Ling- Language Arts Resource Recommendation, background behind that information, the really rigorous selection process and, and kudos to all of those that were involved. Um, in short, they reviewed, I believe it was six, uh, different resources ultimately arrived at two really high-quality resources and then vetted those accordingly. Those two were, see Amplify and StudySync. Uh, it was determined that StudySync actually was able to accomplish eight out of eight of the criteria that had been, um, determined in their rubric. Uh, whereas Amplify, I believe only, uh, it was half, if memory serves me correctly, four of eight. Um, so the recommendation was that the board consider both a three-year and/or a six-year bundle. Um, and then the price differences accordingly. There was a, a pretty large discount if the board was willing to commit to a longer, um, a longer term for that. So the recommendation was that we review and make a decision. Future agenda items, uh, K through five literacy in May. Initial learning related to the AP audit and our next meeting will be Monday, May 15th at 5:30 PM. Sorry for the very fast talking there.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, business services?
Uh, Business Services Committee met on Thursday, March 23rd at 5:30. The discussion included a review of the Mid Valley February financial statement and the D303 um, February financial report. Both of those, um, exposed no issues. There was a discussion around the facility master plan that included additional conversation about the heat maps specifically for early childhood and, uh, the desire.
Yes, yes.
They, we did meet and had a great discussion. Um, they're wrapping up and I do believe they're, we're meeting in April. I mean, that is our last meeting. Our board member reports are in committee. Moving to item number four, um, which is for discussion, elementary facilities.
Okay, thank you very much. Excited about this conversation. We get back to roughly February 23rd where our demonstrator, RSP came to the board uh, during a special business services meeting and where we discussed all the information around our facilities, our capacities, um, what it's looking like from our birth rates all the way through, uh, from our early age students all the way through high school. It was a fantastic reporting, gave us a lot of information. Part of that report request and then the board direction to the superintendent was to, uh, come back to the board with the elementary minimum standards uh, for our facilities, our space facilities. And that's what we're going to be doing this evening. It is really walking the board through what are those spaces within each of our buildings? Um, what does that look like from a facility side of things? Again, this isn't about, uh, people within our schools. This is really about the brick and mortar. What, how does the brick and mortar in each of our, our schools? Um, how does it respond to our needs of our district? So one of the pieces that we saw throughout that report was that we have, and this is no, this is not new, new news to people, but we have certain elementaries that are, are significantly overcrowded. Uh, the board's charge is to me, what was to, let's start looking at this. Let's start understanding this better and deeper. But tonight's, what I'm seeking from the board tonight is consensus on the standards. That is, that is the goal of tonight. It's just to see consensus from the board that these are the standards. What we will do with the standards, we will then send this back to RSP to begin the next step in the process. Again, the process is eventually to have new boundaries wi- within our district that will be more, uh, accommodated to our buildings. So we don't have some of the overcrowding or, uh, having families who, who live across the street from an elementary school, potentially having to go somewhere else. So that's the goal of the week, but tonight it's literally about a consensus to the board on the standards. That is our outcome. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Igo, uh, and Mr. Buxton. Uh, these two have spent a significant amount of time studying, having conversations with, with principals being inside of our buildings to really have a deep understanding of our schools. And again, the, the facilities, the space and how we use that. Dr. Igo.
All right, so, um, as, as Dr. Gordon mentioned, we really have a couple of different outcomes for this evening. One is to provide you or identify kind of that minimum standard for. I just need to know my personal better right now. I'm just saying it. To identify the minimum standards for spatialization. We want to give you a rationale for the impact and why we chose each of those standards. Identify for you what could be the impact over time in terms of what are we seeing this kind of upfront? And then, um, talk about reaching consensus on the elementary standards. So we're looking really for some things access kind of in that process.
Since we're having problems, the camera's down as well. Go ahead.
So just thinking in terms of we had some conversation around those, our strategic plan and our strategic priorities. As we've started to walk through tonight, one of the things that we are really done is really spend some time making sure we understand what are our strategic priorities and any recommendations that we're bringing absolutely online, not only aligned with these priorities, but also move us in the direction of reaching some of the outcomes that we placed, that we talked about earlier. So really thinking intentionally about how does space impact your overall successes? Just kind of, Dr. Gordon, talk a little bit about this, just to kind of give us a little bit of a, a process. You know, in February, we heard of, and we have the results in that enrollment, that capacity study. Tonight, we're talking about the elementary minimum standards. We will be back in May to talk about many of the high school standards. But we know that the elementary was, there were some significant needs around that we wanted to prioritize. Once we have those consensus, they will go back to RSP and they will come together and they will make recommendations on what we can do to hit that functional capacity within our buildings. And then we'll be back here, um, in the fall with a comprehensive plan that indicates here's what we see as some of the short terms and here's what we see as we use in possible long term. So then you're in positions to make some decisions about.
Before we hold on, how are we on streaming?
Now, this box here has gone down. This, the only thing that's coming through is the microphone on here. Uh, whatever we can. I'm trying to get it going.
We want to.
Okay, so we are recording manually, so we'll be able to provide at least a voice recording for listening. So go ahead.
Just follow along in our packet at this point because I think we've lost this as well now.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Use the mic or not use?
Yeah, you use the mic.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. All right. I'm, I'm out of whack now.
You're good. You got this.
All right, so just kind of looking at, um, establishing the standard, just really walking into, how did we go about this? What were some of the things that we took into place? So we're kind of moving on to slide six. Um, we talked a little bit about kind of that background information, but I really want to just kind of make sure that we revisit some of that in terms of the key takeaways from that report really were that our overall enrollment is expected to remain stable. That across the district, there is functional capacity for our elementary enrollment. But I think there's a caveat here that I want to make sure that we acknowledge is that that study didn't necessarily look at early childhood. So we're going to talk about that tonight, like what's the impact of that so that we have all those pieces? And that they really indicated to us we needed some minimum standards so that they could then help us determine what our functional capacity was. And they really encouraged us to stop back and think about what are our values and our strategic plans to identify some of those, um, minimum standards. And that's really the work that we engaged in over the last several weeks. Slide seven. Again, I just wanted to bring through what our considerations were as we developed some of these standards. We hit on those strategic plan, our district values, priorities and outcomes. We also spent a significant amount of time in those comprehensive reports by both WOLD and RSP and associates. So we went back to WOLD, who really helped us understand what is our square footage and what is like the, the architectural capacity? I can't remember the technical word for that of our buildings versus RSP's ideas around functional capacity so that we understood those and we could really start to understand how did that play out in our buildings? We also considered our enrollment, both our current and our future enrollment. And as we talk tonight, as we're talking about some of the things we put in place and some of those standards, what we did is we utilized the 24, 25 projections. No, I'm lying. We used the 23, 24 projections because as we looked out across, that was the year we were at our greatest capacity. So that gave us the opportunity to say, if we were at our largest capacity, what does that mean across all of our buildings to make sure we were building and planning kind of with that in mind? And then we also, as we thought about those minimum standards versus those aspirational standards, we were really cautious in about the current design of each of our buildings and its impact on our space and our usage.
Yep. You've approved it. Seems it's working. Yep. You are good. So we are streaming again?
So we are streaming again? Thank you so much. Good work.
Alright, so those were the considerations we took in and the assumptions we made as we identified some of those standards really was working with that board class size of twenty-five and twenty-seven. Um, as we may move forward, that our early childhood enrollment would remain stable, that we weren't going to, we weren't looking to expand or we're just keeping it stable. And that our minimum standards must be met without significant structural changes to our buildings. So those minimum standards don't have any structural changes, aspirationally you'll start to see that we are thinking a little bit bigger and beyond. And then as we kind of walk through the report tonight, we're going to do it in chunks and we're going to do it kind of through classroom space, big ideas around classroom space, then office space. That we have to have in every elementary building regardless of enrollment. Then our district instructional programs and then what is the spaces that's needed for our early childhood program? As we walk through, we'll stop after each spot to like gather some feedback, get some questions, make sure that we're clear. But we're really going to utilize on your, you all have kind of this addendum. Um, we're going to really utilize this to kind of walk through. There's pictures on the slide, but I think you might appreciate having a bigger picture here. With that, am I done? I'm going to turn it on Jared.
So we began our work by thinking about the space needs within our buildings in four big areas, classroom space. Both core space, non-core elective space and repurpose space, which we'll talk about in a bit. Office space, collaborative spaces, and then our other programs or, or special programs. As we talk about the spaces this evening, we will focus on each of these category categorized spaces. Please know the minimum space standards need to be established to ensure equitable learning experiences for each student in our district. The district's values and strategic priorities of effective collaboration, instructional coherence and culture of dignity were referenced throughout the establishment of these minimum standards.
Are you able to advance the slide?
I am. Yeah. As we consider the minimum standards for our classrooms and general spaces in our elementary buildings, it became necessary to use consistent vocabulary with the information presented as part of RSP and Associates District Enrollment and Capacity Analysis in late February. Therefore, as we establish minimum standards for our classroom spaces, we will categorize the types of classroom spaces as follows. Core classrooms, those are our grade level classrooms or homeroom. We have non-core and elective classrooms, which are specials classrooms, art, music and power. P, repurpose classrooms, which simply means additional spaces we have within our buildings that are core classrooms, but that can accommodate potential growth. Should we have a grade level or two that's not the perfect three section that can again respond flexibly to growing enrollment throughout a grade level. And then when we talk about collaborative spaces, we're going to really talk and get, talk about work rooms and, um. Conference rooms that sit outside of a principal's office. So again, you do have the addendum in front of you that looks a little bit like the slide. On the screen and we are going to be starting with the first page, going through the classroom, uh, general spaces. So when we began the process of identifying minimum space standards, we start with what are the learning needs of our students? And you've heard us say many, many times of how important high functioning PLCs are to student achievement, teacher clarity and overall collective efficacy. Therefore, through this lens of looking at core classrooms, we identified a minimum standard of eighteen classrooms that are a minimum of seven hundred and fifty square feet. Now please know the industry standard is eight hundred and fifty square feet per classroom. But as we really took a deeper dive into our current inventory and looked at the number of, of classrooms that aren't quite up to that standard. Uh, we did make some allowances to go down to seven fifty for our minimum standard. In addition, as we look at elective non-core classrooms, uh, this standard really speaks to the priority of having instructional coherence. Having dedicated spaces for art and music. And in power promotes a guaranteed and viable curriculum and assures the students' experiences aren't negatively impacted by state space constraints. For the elective non-core classrooms, we have identified a minimum standard of having a dedicated space for art and music. However, please know it does indicate that we would, we would prefer and feel that a dedicated space for empower. Is critical and should be looked at to the greatest extent possible. You will see over in the aspirational column, we are stating that having a dedicated space for empower that is eleven hundred square feet is our aspirational.
So kind of looking at the next set, that repurpose classroom, that was really that opportunity for us to be able to have some flexibility as our, our grade levels might. We might need four sections at some point in time along the way. It was the ideal or that aspirational stage really would be that we had two core classrooms available in all of our buildings. But as we really dug in and started to play out what, based upon how many classrooms we were going to need, became clear that that wasn't something we could meet. Um, without having any significant restructure to our buildings. So we went back and really looked at what does the data tell us? And went back and said, really where we can is we need to do two classrooms where in that meet, meet, heat map, it indicated we had. Likely, more likely to have growth over time. So we added two classrooms. We wanted to make sure we had two in those buildings and then one in all of our other buildings. But again, not the ideal state. But based upon our inventory and trying to make those things kind of move forward. Additionally, we looked at ADA. We know especially as the CAC did some of their work, that ADA was really a significant need and a desire for us to have those places. Again, as we looked at that minimum standard, we're looking for no real significant structural changes. We know our buildings that need that. Need significant structural change. So we really said as our minimum standard that to the greatest extent possible, we have a ADA compliance. But that our aspirational stage would be that we have ADA compliance across all of our buildings. That we had a dedicated workroom. So that our teachers had opportunities, um, to engage and complete the work that they needed to do, some high quality collaboration as well as preparation of resources. And that a conference room. Again, for the conference room for meetings, not only within our buildings, but to bring parents in for meetings as well. On the minimum standard is that we have a conference room available and to the greatest extent that conference room is not within the principal's. Principal's office. And then our aspirational standard then would be that we would like the conference room to be outside of the principal's office. But again, that wasn't, we weren't able to accomplish that within our current inventory. So that's just kind of laying out like the big general purposes of some of our rooms before we dig into some of those other pieces that we'd stop here. In case there were some questions about how we set up those standards. No. Alright.
Okay, so the, the second type of space we will dive into tonight is office space. Please know as we transition into this type of space, we are talking about, um, roles that no matter what building you're in. These are, uh, space specific, role specific. Uh, spaces, meaning all of our buildings have an ISC, all of our buildings have a mass specialist. So really these office spaces are not based on enrollment. They're simply based on a site. Makes sense? Alright, um, as we shift into looking at our space needs, we decided to break down office space into a few categories. Oh, individual office space or confidential space. This would be for roles that, um, a, a big portion of their work, they're either doing evaluations. They are talking with students or parents about highly sensitive topics and it's just really important they have a space that, that is their own, that is confidential. Then we'll also look at space that is shared workspace. And these are office spaces that might be more flexible. Uh, it might be a space where that educator might not be in that space for the whole day. So there's some flexibility with the time and usage of that space. Um, based on the work that they're doing with kids. And so again, for common vocabulary and we're, we're again, we're staying very consistent with our report. Again, that individual office space is the confidential work area in our shared workspace would be again, shared and flexible and a collaborative space. So if we look at the recommendations for the minimum standard for office space, let's start at the very top row one. And this is going to identify the roles in our buildings that would require a confidential. Individual space and those are school psychologist, social workers, uh, speech and language pathologist. And our minimum standard that we've identified is three office spaces per building. At a minimum of a hundred and twenty-five square feet. The next three categories, they're, they're all shared space, but we've broken it down just a little bit. In, in row two, you're going to see shared workspaces that are for required services. So by required services, we mean special education services and supports or ELL services and supports. Um, and based on our current staffing, and again, this is not based on enrollment, this is based on our, our, our building staff numbers. Uh, we have looked at six staff members need space for approximately a hundred square feet per staff member. Equally in six hundred square feet for those roles. And that wouldn't have to be in one space that can be flexibly distributed across the office spaces that you have available in the building. In the third column, you look at those, those additional or supportive services, not the required services. So again, every building has a reading specialist, mass specialist, instructional support coach and student support interventionist. And kind of using similar logic of a hundred square feet per educator. We feel for those four roles, four hundred square feet would be the minimum standard. Knowing that that too could be flexibly, um, distributed across multiple office spaces. And then finally, uh, row four talks about some of our spaces that maybe they don't utilize that space for an entire day or they don't utilize that space five days a week. Or there might be a lot of flexibility on how many students are accessing that level of programming or, um, supports. And that's both the AT math program, band and orchestra. We have orchestra, third through fifth grade in our elementary schools. Band we have in fifth grade in our elementary schools and then occupational therapy and physical therapy. Again, all of these roles are not permanent members of a building. They come in. Um, a couple of days a week or like a fixed schedule. Our AT math teachers have a fixed schedule where they're there for two hours every day. But we've looked at those numbers that are of students that are accessing those spaces. And have a minimum standard of five hundred square feet. Now we do recognize that a hundred square feet is a little small. But it also reflects the current reality in many of our buildings currently. Um, as we think about this through that aspirational lens, we may have overestimated particularly on row two. Um, we think it maybe should be more to a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty square feet. Per educator and that might be closer to the ideal standard. But we, we are acknowledging that a hundred square feet is a little tight, but that is again, our current reality in many buildings. And I will stop there if there are any questions about core classrooms or office space.
Alright, so our next task was really to think through, um, our district programs. And we kind of lifted those out and identified what we were going to need for those instructional purposes. Kind of along the way so that as we provide these back to RSP, they can think, you know, creatively in terms of space, in terms of where those buildings should be. In terms of some common language, I thought it would be important for us to just kind of talk through. I'm going to talk about different programming that we have. And I wanted to just build a little bit of a common knowledge or common understanding. So we're going to talk about some special education programs that we have and we really have three of those programs. One of them is access and that really supports our students with social language needs and they typically have some type of diagnosis as it relates to autism. Rise supports our students with more complex needs or multiple disabilities and often. Um, students in rise have significant equipment needs, um, in order to meet their day-to-day needs. And that's important in this conversation because the amount of space they need in order to manage some of their equipment. And then our strive program really supports our students with significant learning disabilities. So we'll talk about what spaces needed for each of those. And then we've kind of identified what we call our TBE services. And those are our English language services for our students. When we have twenty or more students speaking the same language in one building. We are required to provide a minimum bilingual education and that. I'm going to kind of talk a little bit about the difference. Bilingual education really is when we're utilizing the home language in order to learn English. Or we can do this through dual language, which is what we are currently doing. And that's really when we're working towards literacy, reading, writing, speaking and listening in both languages. Okay, and we separated that out because. How we, that's not something we offer in every building because not every building has twenty plus. There are some buildings, right? We have our dual language program. In which we are servicing our students who speak Spanish. But we also have, um, starting next year in Norton Creek that will have a bilingual program because they will have twenty plus and will need to have a separate section of that. So those are both kind of playing into how, how we're going, how we need and utilize kind of our space kind of going forward. So if you kind of look at how we've identified on page three, our district instructional programs. We've kind of identified like our access program. And then we really identified the actual square footage that we might need versus the number of classrooms that we might need. And the reason we did that is because it's forty-two hundred square feet, but it might mean that we could take a core classroom and split it to get multiple spaces along the way. And again, we wanted to make sure that we were providing enough opportunity, um, for that. Also, when we have some of our special ed programs, we also have related services staff that comes with them. And so we wanted to make sure that we have, we had space for those people as well. So we really needed to think through who might need shared space, who might need some individual space. And again, as we're planning ahead, we want to make sure that we're thinking through that lens. And you'll notice in that aspirational column that it really says to be determined. And the reason we have that is to be determined is it's really this idea that we're having a new executive director of student services. And we absolutely want to work with that person to build, what should that look like? Moving forward as we think about how does that align with our strategic plan in our services? And then for our TBE services.
Uh, before.
Yeah.
Before you go on, um, some of the other, the earlier conversations were almost discussions on a per school basis. This doesn't sound the same.
Correct.
Is this at the district level then in terms of the square footage requirements?
Yes, so what we tried to do was say, these are district programs, so students could be bused from across anywhere in the district to access these programs. So we tried to say, this is the amount of space that we need. So as you're thinking about our functional capacity, we need space for these programs. But they don't have to necessarily fall in line in any particular place. Does that help?
Yeah.
And then finally, we have the TBE needs, um, as it, as we like lay those out and we've kind of listed those as a minimum of those twelve core classrooms. Um, as well as there's a specialist for dual language for our dual language specialists, um, there. And again, we have TBD for our aspirational group because we have a new executive director of student services coming in as well as a director of language acquisition. And so we'd really want to utilize their expertise to help us identify what should those services look like? So therefore, what type of space do we need in order to move that forward? I'm sorry? Oh gosh, thank you. Uh, our strive program, so, um, that really services our students with significant, um, learning disabilities. And we have been working to phase that out over time that our, our best practices really indicates that those students need to be in our gen ed classroom. They're accessing general ed curriculum. It's absolutely imperative that they are receiving access to the, to that core curriculum. And so we are down to two classrooms for third, fourth and fifth grade for next year. Um, and we are, in the next year or two, will have the ability to phase that out and begin servicing all those students within our general education classrooms. Thank you for indicating I skipped that. Any questions as it relates to? District instructional programs?
I have a question and. I, I'm guessing, and more of a comment and then kind of a follow-up with, you know, whether this makes sense. Um, and for some of these district programs. Is it, does it make sense that, you know, they're at the same school, for example, they're multi, um, grade classrooms and. Um, so the teachers can collaborate. So that may be an important factor we need to consider.
Absolutely, for sure. Absolutely. And one of the things I kind of put in the notes column and thank you for pointing that out because I, I don't think I called it out. Is that one of the things we want to do is we want to make sure that those classes. Is that one of the things we want to do is we want to make sure that those classes are in K five buildings to the greatest extent possible. We do not want our students that struggle the most with transition to be transitioning. Like from second grade to third grade to the greatest extent possible. So we'd want to have like a K two, a three, five class. Again, that can move in multiple ways and that those two teachers could work together as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions? You all are making me slightly nervous without any questions. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about early childhood. So as I mentioned, that was not in R S P's report, when he, they talked about functional assessment or functional capacity. So again, kind of starting in that common language, you'll see many of the same spaces that look very similar. There are a couple that are slightly different. Is this really this idea of small group learning spaces at early childhood? In terms of needing some gross motor spaces for our O T and our P T services. As well as some space for our walk-in speech services. So there are students who only receive speech language services from us during the week. Or during the school year, and that don't participate in our class, in our program, our classrooms, our preschool classrooms. So making sure that we have space to provide. Them with room as well. So page four in that addendum really kind of calls out what each of those are, what those needs are. And if you'll look at those core classrooms, you know, we have a minimum of thirteen core, thirteen core spaces, because that's currently, that would maintain us. That would maintain us at a stable space with eight hundred square feet. Again, that's not ideal, that's not exactly where we want to be. But it provides us with enough space and it allows us to meet the needs. So in that aspirational range, you'll see a size that looks more similar to kindergarten, like those classrooms are set up and designed to be center-based. So that's really where we would like to be. In those non-core, we don't necessarily have electives or non-core at element, at preschool. But we do have a need for a diagnostic team to meet our child find, as well as a child and a family resource center. Again, those really help support our child find obligations from birth to five. We also want to continue to have a space. Where if we had more students and we needed to open another classroom, that we had the ability to do that. One major difference here for A D A is that we are indicating that for our early childhood, we really do need to have. We need to be A D A compliant. The purpose of that program is special education, so we do need to make sure that students and families can access that program. The workspace would be consistent and the conference room space would be consistent with the elementary recommendation, that gross motor space. There's a couple of purposes for that. One is that we are required to do thirty minutes of. Gross motor play every day to the greatest extent possible. That play is to be outside. However, there are days when that's not possible, so we need to have space within our building, which allows us to engage in that space. As well as that space for those O T P T services. Also having some small classrooms about two hundred and fifty square feet. That would allow us to do small groups for speech and language services for our walk-in speech students. Again, we'll need some confidential space. As well as some shared office space kind of along the way. So that would allow us to kind of meet each of those needs. Those are kind of meeting our minimum needs as well as providing what our aspirational needs are. Questions as it relates to early childhood?
Is is there? Some, I don't know what the right word is, not laws, but rules. That would say that they have to be all on the same floor. Are there any?
Oh, thank you. That's a really good point. That that would, that's true of our, against first grade and under students, all we need to be on the first level. They have to be on one level. Thank you for asking that question.
So we're gonna, we're gonna shift now to talk a little bit about the the impact of. Approving and and coming to consensus with these minimum standards. We do feel that the recommendations made in tonight's presentation are deeply grounded in our strategic priorities. We are confident that identifying minimal space standards will move us in the right directions when it comes to creating environments that prioritize effective collaboration. Instructional coherence and culture of dignity. So let's talk through just a few very specific impacts of these proposed standards. Number one, increased opportunities for high-quality collaboration with P L Cs. I probably should have hit that significantly harder on that classroom slide where we talked about having a minimum of eighteen core classes. That allows for three sections per grade level, and we feel that having three sections at every grade level. Allows that system and structure to have continuous collaboration and continuous P L C work. Number two, expanded service delivery model resulting in a more inclusive learning environment. So if you look at how we try to break down our office spaces. In the form of confidential spaces, shared spaces, spaces that can be flexible in nature. But again, the, and and it all kind of ties into that P L C work of if when we have very clear priority standards and. And that's really the work that we're intervening on with students, prioritizing with students, giving students access to grade level material. We want to make sure we're putting situations and and space needs in place to have inclusive environments for those students. We also know that equitable learning spaces for art, music and empower are critical. We we do feel strongly that. The student experience is impacted by whether or not it's art in a cart or music on a cart or empowering the L R C. We can all acknowledge that having equitable spaces is important for our students and our staff. When it comes to being able to deliver that guaranteed and viable curriculum. Also, when you look at some of these standards that we've put forth, just a few things I'd want to pull out for the board. Lincoln Elementary School currently does not meet most of those standards that we propose today. They have a total of twelve classroom spaces in their building. Ten of those twelve are less than seven hundred and fifty square feet, which was our minimum standard for square footage. Richmond Elementary or Richmond Intermediate has twenty-one core classrooms, and because Richmond does fall in one of those high-density hotspots. In our minimum standard, we we were proposing to have two of those repurposed places, repurposed spaces to allow for that population growth. They have twenty-one total spaces available at their site. And then finally, when we're looking at the implications of moving toward these minimum standards, both from a lens of classroom space. Non-elective core space, repurpose space and adequate office space for our staffing. Fox Ridge would likely need to be reopened as an elementary school to hit these standards.
So as a follow-up, as you. Created the standards, the seven hundred and fifty square feet for a core classroom versus the eight fifty, can you speak to where where did those numbers come from?
Well, the eight fifty is kind of an industry standard. This, we have twenty-nine classrooms. In our inventory of elementary buildings that are under eight hundred square feet. So we are trying to look at what's reasonable and realistic and not having a major fiscal response, like trying to do with what we have. And having twenty-nine of our classrooms under eight hundred. Need us look at some of those spaces that were seven fifty, that were serving as classrooms currently. And so that's ultimately why we landed there.
I I think too, just to kind of add on to that was the idea of the twenty-five to twenty-seven students. Right, we wouldn't want to get too small with that number as we've got, and we felt like seven hundred and fifty, while again, not. Roomy, not luxurious, but we can get twenty-five to twenty-seven students in that classroom size and. And conducts classes, you know, in the way we would like to. So that's where that seven fifty came from.
But the eight, just to reiterate, if I'm hearing correctly, the eight hundred and fifty square feet, that is supported by the research. That you have identified for best learning practice and instructional practices and then your expertise.
Yes, that came through, yes, the Wold report, yes.
Mr. Buxton, just as I'm trying to imagine. What the square footage looks like, the smaller classrooms at Mon Hall, what is the square footage of those?
Seven fifty-one.
That is tiny, okay. I know, thank you.
We weren't joking when we said we spent a lot of time.
So we talked a little bit about the seven fifty and twenty-seven to seven fifty is the ratio of students to square foot that you've used. And so I'm, I'm looking at that and saying, well, if we're, if we already feel uncomfortable at, or at the maximum level of comfort. Given the fact that we happen to have lots of seven hundred and fifty-one square foot rooms at. Twenty-seven to seven fifty in the planning document, what happens when we talk about numbers like twenty-nine? From a planning perspective, do we simply say that's an? Unmanageable relationship between total students and classroom?
It would probably be with, we would probably, what we often will say is. We have these classrooms that we hold and we're like, this classroom, because of its size, can hold no more than. Twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven kids. If we were to bump up our class size. We would have to take into account, we have smaller classrooms and and some of those can't be that large. Am I making sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I think one thing for us to consider then, be because we have variability across the fleet. Would be to look at the places where. The preponderance of seven fifties sit, I mean, you've called out already that. Ten of twelve in Lincoln don't fit, but I heard a number like twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine total in our buildings, yeah.
Can you finish that twenty-nine total in our buildings, what?
Are under eight hundred square feet.
But they meet seven fifty.
I have that.
Other questions?
I have more of a comment, I guess, that we can consider. First of all, this is very thorough, answered a lot of the questions that I had, so thanks a lot. I know there was a lot of hard work. That went into this. And so as I was thinking about both the minimum standard that we've established and the aspirational standard, and it was kind of spoken to right there. Is it even possible for us to get to the aspirational standard in a lot of the schools? And it sounds like probably not. Unless, of course, we did some significant movement.
Correct. It would be significant financial contributions that would need to be added to.
Or development.
Correct. It would be significant dollars to add eight hundred and fifty classrooms across our district. So then the size.
Then then that begs the question, then what are we tasking R S P with? Is R S P then to develop what we want from a minimum standard perspective? It strikes me that that's probably so. Because again, if the aspirational standard is really not achievable, then it's a nice to have, but more like an impossible to have as well.
Correct. It is what the board will approve is the minimum standard. And that's what we'll hand off to R S P. As we've, as these two and others have reviewed all this information, this is what will allow us. To have the number of students, as Dr. Igo indicated, in the twenty-three, twenty-four, that's our largest elementary group. That's when we'll have the most amount of elementary students in our schools. So they use that number to determine, will this work? Will all of these classrooms are with a minimum, the aspirational, that would need, again, significant financial contributions. To make that occur across this district.
But but as a caveat to that, if we were to add any. Classrooms to an existing building or build a new building, we would go for the aspiration.
You could, but that's not on the conversation for tonight. I I just want to be super clear that that that's not what this is about. This is about to be able to hand this over to R S P to say. Where would you put boundary lines that would match these minimum?
Is there an easy way to link to the standards that the board previously adopted?
Can make that, the these are are very similar to a lot of the work that the C A C, Wold and others did. That's what was our starting point with that work. But again, I want to be clear. The piece within that work, there's a lot of aspirational aspects that I don't want people to be confused with. I mean, around principal office size, conference room, that's not what we're looking for here. So this was a very specific task given to us by the board and. R S P for them to do their next step, but we will, we can make that connection. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can also provide an answer to the question of the twenty-nine classrooms under eight hundred square feet. Fourteen of them are also under seven hundred and fifty square feet. Ten of which are at Lincoln.
Just go, I made sure that I heard you correct. Ten of those are at Lincoln of the fourteen, those are the two numbers. Okay, thank you.
How many total core classrooms do we have? What's your? Elementary.
How many total elementary core classrooms?
Yeah.
Two hundred and seventy-six.
So just kind of pulling this back, I'm going to finish out the presentation, then we can dive into the, some of those deeper questions in terms of. Again, here's our timeline, we're in that second bullet. Like establishing those standards, once we have them, we'll move into sending this back to R S P to thou say, can you take a look at functional capacity? Utilizing these standards and then we'll be able to come back to you to like, here's the options and kind of vet those for you.
If I can just, just to tag along with Mrs. Ferriger's question, how many classrooms? Is this in the, I think it's, I'm not sure what word, I think I was using the incorrect word last time. I think you used functional capacity. I'm looking for the as-built capacity, whatever term that would be. Is that two hundred and seventy-six in the, in the capacity? Or number of classrooms as those buildings were built? In this, in in other words, what they initially housed.
Yes, I believe so. I believe I think the answer is yes.
Okay.
But. Not just the initial, the add-ons to the buildings, overtimes, many of our buildings have have had a wing added on here or there.
Yeah, I I guess when I say as-built, I I'm including.
I didn't want to be super clear. Yeah, thank you.
That number does not include the mobile at Davis.
Just going to ask if these numbers include mobiles at all.
So can I, I'm just going to bring this big idea back, and then I swear we can answer all those questions, right? I just want to make sure I bring this.
Sorry.
This back together, but that idea that tonight, what we're looking for is consensus on the minimum standards for us to move forward. That R S P will take these and create a update, update that functional capacity utilizing these standards. They're going to provide us options with them, and we'll also have the opportunity to gather feedback, right? Like it's not like we'll take that when we come back to the board. And I do want people to hear that the, this is the earliest this would happen would be the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Just wanted to make sure I brought some. The earliest that this could happen would be the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. With that, I'm now happy to answer any other questions.
So because we're. They quote you, I want to make sure that that two seventy-six is, is that including Fox Ridge?
Yes.
So it's elementary and early childhood at this, this year. Okay.
So one of the things that we were tasked with, I'll use Mr. Lackner's, look at our entire fleet. And to make sure we're we're investigating all potential use for the, to solve the elementary boundaries. So that was the task given, and that's what we've returned to the board.
Can I ask another clarifying? So am I looking at this right? We have two hundred and seventy-six total inventory of elementary. Classrooms, we have fourteen of that, so. A small percentage in in actuality that are under the seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Yeah, and and maybe I I got a few questions misconstrued. I want to be clear. If we're looking at twelve buildings, our current eleven elementary and Fox Ridge, we have two hundred and eighty-eight rooms.
Okay. But the fourteen is still the same.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. The fourteen is below seven fifty-one square feet, right? Okay, I'm just making sure I've got it right. Thank you.
If there are no other questions. We would then ask for consensus of these standards, which the board has in their hand. This document here, that this was reached by consensus, that we move these standards forward to R S P.
I'm seeing that you have consensus.
We have consensus. We will continue moving the process forward. Again, this is just one step in our our collective process. Want to give again, a lot of credit to to the two individuals sitting here in front of you today, Dr. Igo, Mr. Buxton. For the immense amount of work and time that they spent on this issue. No. So thank you.
Okay, now we will proceed in the agenda to item number five, which is our consent agenda at this time. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items five A through five V?
So moved.
Jinx.
Second, thank you, Mr. Kuscher. Uh, may I ask for a second? That was Mrs. McCabe with a second for the motion. Uh, are there any items that a board member would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, uh, I see none. Is there any discussion? Okay, Ms. Marsan, would you please take roll call for the vote?
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuscher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mrs. Barker?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferrer?
Uh, yes, motion passes seven-two-zero. Moving on to um agenda item number six, uh, first for action is the Fox Valley Career Center Joint Agreement. Do I have a motion to approve the Fox Valley Career Center Joint Agreement?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Bell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Barker, for the second. Is there any discussion on this topic? Okay, Ms. Marsan, would you please take the roll call for vote?
Mr. Kuscher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mrs. Barker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferrer?
Yes, motion passes seven-two-zero. Uh, moving to item B, uh, which is the Handle with Care Memorandum of Understanding. Do I have a motion to approve the Handle with Care Memorandum of Understanding?
So moved.
Thank you, uh, Mrs. McCabe. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Barker. Is there any discussion, further discussion, I should say at this time?
I'd like to explain why I'm gonna vote no for this. Um, there's a real lack of clarity on what the administration is asking teachers to do when a message is received that um can open up an awful lot of um non-value-add activity and possibly harm the students who have been reported on by the police. Um, the police are gonna share almost no information about uh, the incidents in which these children have been involved. And I, I feel like that has the opportunity to really stigmatize some children or families without real explanation. And I think that could be damaging. I'm concerned that because other agencies are also involved like DCFS or someone else, that the mere mention of these without any proper procedures for the district or really any other explanation of what the district's expectations are around these students, that if there were negative outcomes associated with the students and no action had been taken by the district, that the district could be exposed to some li- liability. And last, I just think that it's wrong for the police to talk to the school district about students without the parents' consent. So I will vote no against, on this.
Thank you, Mr. Lackner, for those comments. Are there any other?
I, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I just had a question for the duration of this agreement. Is this an annual agreement? Is this a, an agreement in perpetuity? If we determine that this is not working adequately, where, where will this come to a vote again? So then a year from now, if this was approved, we would then be reviewing it to determine if it is effective.
Correct.
Is there such a thing as a mid-year off-ramp? Should we have some, realize some of the issues?
Absolutely. I believe we could work with the St. Charles Police Department on that.
I just add the same concern that I expressed before, and that is that uh, but two things, the, the uh um, not informing the, the parents, family, but also the lack of clarity for the teachers. Um, I think it, it takes uh some of those intuitive things that a teacher would normally do in a classroom kind of takes it away. Um, I think that that can have an impact. As I think about it, that can have an impact, not just on the students who are identified under this program, but um, when a student's, uh, teacher's instincts are taken away, um, I think it can have an impact across the board.
Thank you, Mr. McNally. Any other additional comments, questions? Okay, thank you for that. Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, you know, I, I think it's important that we maybe um have maybe we take a look at the other districts. This isn't new. Um, this is something that's been going on for quite some time and successfully managed by other districts. It's, nothing is being taken away and there's no information that's given other than there may be a potentially social, emotional need here. And if you've worked with kids, you sometimes know that kids come to school because there's nowhere else to go after some pretty tragic things have happened. Um, and heads up really helps you meet their needs. So that's my thought about that.
Thank you.
Another, just one quick thing I would like to add is that um, while there might be interest or questions from um, an educator or another staff member, if, this wouldn't be the first time that teachers are exposed to, or not school, exposed to, but presented with a student who may need a little extra care. And in my experience, I certainly don't know all the teachers in our district, but I have found them all to be of the utmost professionalism. And they're dealing with confidential matters with students with IEPs or five oh fours constantly. And so I would be really shocked if there was a teacher who was asking probing questions that were not appropriate. I think um, to your point, you're a teacher, you know, when you see a student who's seemingly different, you're going to give them respect and do you, you know, are you okay? And I feel like I, I trust our teachers to do that and I, I will be voting yes because I think it's important for us to have a heads up at, not the board, the teachers or, or staff that have interactions with a particular student. Um, I did it myself when my oldest in our, was a kindergartner, our, our dog died. I just said, hey, this, just in case. So for me, I understand the parent component. I completely do. Um, I feel that the, the police is, are not going to be telling the school district unnecessary information. And I think it's what's what's best for the student to be able to, to give that piece of information. So I will be voting yes.
And last, last bit from me here, please. Um, I'd be willing to support this. I just want to ensure that we're rolling it out correctly, right? As far as the expectations are concerned. And so that we're, we're not overstepping the role or overstepping the purpose of this program, right? The purpose of this program is not necessarily to approach the student and offer additional interventions and or support, just to kind of keep an eye out from what I've understood and from the mountain of info that they gave us. That's really the point for this is keep your eye out, not, not probe, not determine what the issue is that's going on at home, but to support the student. So I do think that we're, it would, it's critical that we ensure effective training is done for this, so that, that teachers, again, the nurturing types of folks that they are, which is why they've pursued a career in this. I think it's critical that they know exactly what the expectations are, um, so that the, the program can exist as it is intended to.
Thank you. We'll, we'll ensure that.
And I just want to make sure we do get that clarity on, on uh, on as we had asked, and he said he was gonna try to provide it to us, look into what, what those parental notification things are. I, I, I would hope that the standard would be unless it is uh abuse on the part of a parent, that the standard would be to inform the parents.
I, I have to react to Mr. McNally's point because while we would hope that, we're adopting or not adopting the memorandum today. And there is no clarity on parental notification. In fact, uh, the deputy chief suggested that it wouldn't happen. So the parental notification is a, a, a big difference between some of the examples that were shared today that are personal. Those were parents making actions. This is the police force making an action on behalf of a child without notifying the parent. And so I'll, I'll just call out Mr. McNally that it's not included in the memorandum as it stands today, that the parents would be notified. And so it would require an amended memorandum in order for the parents, in order for this board to have an assurance that in those situations that include anything other than a parent being the subject of the investigation, that parental notification would be a requirement or even included in the process. And so it's not, it's absent today.
To be clear, that, that, that's kind of the point I'm trying to drive home is that that's absent and I want, I would like that clarity.
I think Officer Majeski did speak to um, that in general, officers usually, unless it involves the parents specifically, correct me if I'm wrong, but I heard him say that they usually talk to the parent in the moment. They could, he couldn't guarantee it, but maybe it's a procedure thing we can utilize going forward.
Right. What I heard is they're going to, the officer's going to use their judgment at the time, depending on the situation, whom they've identified um, at the site of the incident and assuming there's children.
I'd, I'd like to see clarity then, just on Mr. Lackner's uh question. Are you, would you say you would feel comfortable if either the department or the district were to let the, the parents know that there had been uh, this message delivered? I mean, given that this is a, a, a partnership between the department and the district. I'm just, I'm just curious if there's anything that would alleviate that concern.
Uh, not really, because as you've described it, Mr. Ko, Mr. Kuscher, you said it's a, it is a partnership between the department and the district. And while that's true, there's a, another party who has ultimate responsibility for the children who are outside of that partnership. And so without that parental participation, um, I, I see it as a, a flawed program.
I guess, I guess bottom line for me is if it's important for the school to know, uh, you know, that there's some sort of a trend, I think that it's important for the parents to know.
Okay. I'm gonna call the question. All the question, we need to vote.
Yes, okay. Um, your point is well taken. As I was getting ready to say, we do have an action on the table or a motion on the table right now related to this memorandum as it stands. So with that said, Ms. Marsan, would you please take the roll call for vote?
Mr. Lackner?
No.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
No.
Mrs. Barker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuscher?
Given the lack of some of the clarity on some of these questions, I'm going to have to vote no.
Mrs. Ferrer?
Yes. Motion passes four-two-three. Uh, item number six C is related to our twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five and twenty-two-five to twenty-two-six school calendars. Do I have a motion to approve the school calendars for the twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six school years?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Kuscher. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bell. Is there any discussion? Um, we have Ms. Conlon up here or questions for her?
I have one that goes to both calendars. So we bumped into a situation because of Election Day with our one school having to be, I don't know who to talk to.
You're gonna talk to me.
Having to be used um, as a polling place. And we have two elections in these calendars. One is the um, I, I think it'll be a presidential election in twenty-four and then again, the um, local election in twenty-five. I don't know, we had um, the presidential election in twenty-twenty was a state holiday. It doesn't appear to be that here. So maybe it was for just one year.
That is correct. It was just for one year.
So um, I wonder, because it did impact one of our schools, if this board is interested in pursuing uh legislation that would change so that any election would be considered a holiday, not just for D three oh three, but for the entire state. My understanding is that DuPage um, had that day off. That schools were, because they use more schools and they, therefore they, they're, either their calendars had, I talked to a couple that said there were no, they had no school on that particular day. I think they tied it to spring break. I'm not sure. And I was checking to see if we had maybe moved it to spring elections in spring break, but then at least for the April. Um, I just think it was, we're kind of stuck because we don't have much say in what the county clerk wants to do. Um, Kane County doesn't seem to use schools, but DuPage does. I know they're gonna try to find another space for the election, but it did cause us problems. So I'm just putting it on the table as either having that day off as a whole district or pursuing it some other way.
I, I, if I could interject, um, first, I'm wondering if this discussion would be better served um, as a separate agenda item unrelated to what we have at hand, which is a vote on these school calendars.
I'm happy to do that. I, I just want to alert that school is on the election day for both of these calendars.
Do we anticipate being a polling location again? I know that, I believe that we had requested to not be, and that was denied. So do we anticipate that we will be selected for polling locations again in the future? Is there any way that we can be aware of that in advance?
But I mean, we could be. They, they really have that, that option in the county of DuPage, so.
When are we privy to that information?
This time is about a month and a half prior to the election. So it made it incredibly challenging. So one of the things that we are doing is sending a letter to the DuPage county, because as Mrs. McCabe indicated, Kane County does not use their schools. DuPage County, that is a very, that's an option for the DuPage. So we are going to be sending a letter uh, to the DuPage um, county clerk informing them of we'd prefer not to, as it was only impacting one of our schools. But if it is, that we want to have uh, advanced notice like during the summer. Uh, so we can plan properly and that way we can inform the board in the community at, at a more timely uh, just more timely.
Any, so you find that agreeable, Mrs. Lush, Mrs. McCabe, thank you. Any other discussion on this topic? Okay, all right. May I have um, we already have that. Would you take a vote?
Sure.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mrs. Barker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuscher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferrer?
Yes, motion passes seven-two-zero. Moving to item number seven on the agenda for information. Um, we continue to have the four uh standing informational items in the packet for your review. The D three oh three financial report, our Mid Valley Financial Report, Freedom of Information Act or FOIA requests and our district enrollment. Uh, item number eight, new business. Um, we did identify earlier a new business item that Mrs. McKay brought forward. Are there any others? Okay. Okay, uh, with that, moving to item number nine, citizen comments, and we do have some citizen comments. So Mrs. McCabe, would you please read our introduction?
During the public comment period, members of the public body who wish to speak are asked to first state their name and community in which they reside. Each individual will have up to three minutes to address the board on the topic of their choosing. And you will hear a beep when that three minutes is up. We ask all individuals who address the board to do so with respect and civility toward others. Please note that personnel matters are sensitive and confidential. We also want to inform our speakers that all regular, special and committee meetings are live streamed and available for viewing at any time on the district's YouTube channel. While the board will not respond to today's public comment during the meeting, we are committed to listening to you to help support our work for the district and on behalf of our students, staff, families and community members. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. McCabe. Um, may I invite Diana Soltes to come forward, please?
Good evening. My name is Diana Soltes and I live in St. Charles. I've uh been here before and I had come to speak about academic safety and transparency tonight. But I, I think I'm gonna start with um, that memorandum of understanding. There never should be anything that the parents are not informed of unless the parents are abusive in nature. The parents are the caregivers, the parents are the primary, and they need to be informed and be part of that process. And while I understand there's a lot of serious issues going on, because I was here to address safety. Um, I don't know that the police should be involved in private citizen uh, issues because it can make certain things significantly worse for the student. If they're wondering, who knows? Why do they know? Why is this being addressed, et cetera? So um, that being said, um, back to academics, which should be the primary focus of schools and not many other programs and things that time is and money are spent on. I think the schools um, need to be concerned about this because with everything uh, in core subjects being at a fifty percent proficiency level across the board and across the ages, um, that's simply unacceptable. I like the fact that we're seeing um, academics being I like the fact that we're seeing, um, academics being addressed because in the Listen, Learn and Return, when they were talking about buildings and facilities, that's a subset, that's a tool or a portion to get to academics. Um, academics needs to be the primary focus and it wasn't even answered when we would be able to address that or discuss that. And so I'd like to see that strategic plan out there, even if it states that it's a draft or a working document. And as that continues to roll forward, I think that's incredibly important for the parents and the community to see and understand what's going on in relation to academics. I would also give, um, a caution that students are not guinea pigs because my kids learned the, the new math and then the new math two point O and then the new, new math and came away not knowing a lot of math in general. And so while research is important, it does need to be a living, working document that changes. Um, and every child, uh, will learn differently. And so that needs to be addressed as well. Um, I think that most of the people I spoke with, as I had said at the Listen, Learn and Return academic was a number one, and that's what the schools are here to do, not many other programs and many other functions. So in relation to that, I've had a lot of feedback from children and others in relation to safety in the schools lately. And, um, I've spoken to those students and it's severe. I mean, bullying has always been an issue, but I'm hearing about girls slamming heads into lockers and fights breaking out and all kinds of things. And when students are telling me they're afraid to go to school, and these are good students who wouldn't be involved in anything like that because they're afraid of getting beat up or hurt, that's a significant issue. And those sorts of things within the schools, not within the homes, should be being addressed first. I know firsthand from my kids having been bullied, that they said, don't, don't say anything, mom, because it only makes it worse. And that, um, that transparency is crucial, and I think that needs to happen across the boards as well. I'll be back for more.
Thank you. Uh, next I would like to invite Michelle Peterson.
Hi, my name is Michelle Peterson and I'm actually from Morris. And I have family and friends who live in this community. They asked me if I'd come and speak tonight. So, um, based on what you presented tonight, the ABCs of school success. So we agree that you've proven that the GPA and attendance are the best indicators of success. Not once during that presentation did I hear you mention sexual orientation, gender, race, nor preferred pronouns. So apparently you agree it's not about one sexual orientation or gender identity that leads to success. So why are you sending out questionnaires to 11-year-old children asking about their gender identity, pronouns, administrative guidelines on gender identity, and if they want more information, how to make LGBTQ students feel more comfortable? How about you just teach kindness and inclusivity to all, regardless of their race, sexual orientation, gender identity, et cetera? Why is there no questionnaire about how they feel about their reading, writing and math comfort level as a baseline from which to grow? I am hoping that you would be more transparent in your agenda regarding the sexualization of our children. Why would you send out a questionnaire about this when you've already opted out of the national sex education standards publicly to the community and to parents? The parents stopped you from teaching this. So now is the school district out to recruit children looking for the weak link in your school? Your job here and as educators' jobs across the country is actually to do what you said tonight under the ABCs of school success. Was this questionnaire sent out to recruit children who might be more easily centralized or who, or to see who might be open to pedophilia? Again, the weak link. These types of questions were asked for a 15-year-old boy in my town via text message by a 34-year-old teacher and baseball coach at the high school. This led to that teacher soliciting that boy with money, $500 up to $1,500 for oral sex. Wanted to make a sex video and asked when he would ever get to see, quote, the little guy referring to his penis. That boy was my son, who went on to become a US Marine intel specialist after a three-year uphill battle to get this teacher convicted of solicitation of a minor in grooming, the only grooming conviction right now in the United States of America. He's now, he's only now at 28 years old, 13 years later, at a good place to use this horrendous experience as a springboard for good. This battle is personal. These types of questionnaires are out of line and border un-grooming. Stop trying to normalize adults speaking about sex to children outside of the normal, healthy sex education that we all grew up with. The fact that the school district did this without the parents' knowledge and permission is abhorrent. After listening to the discussion tonight, keeping the parents in the dark seems to be a theme of this district. Start focusing on the primary letters of the alphabet, as you noticed, the ABCs of success or the three Rs we all grew up with, reading, writing and arithmetic, and not the LGBT, LGBTQ plus alphabet and the sex agenda, and stop grooming and indoctrinating our children. As an afterthought, based on your space utilization study, you might want to reduce that because more and more parents and families will be homeschooling their children. Because if you haven't noticed, and to coin a phrase from one of my friends, the schools, especially the middle school, are on fire and it's no longer safe to drop our children off at these state-funded indoctrination camps, indoctrination camps, which by the way, are backed by the World Economic Forum and the Pritzker family at the highest levels and whose leading oligarch, Tom Pritzker, JB's cousin, has written in Jeffrey Epstein's Black Book under 13 different phone numbers, along with other members of the Pritzker family. Epstein, who has become known as the world's most prolific pedophile, is just the tip of the iceberg. They have recruited children for decades and the US school age children have always been on the radar. Protect our children and do your job just by educating them in the ABCs of success and not by sexualizing them. Thank you.
Thank you. May I ask Roxanne Shilka to come forward, please? That was Roxanne Shilka.
Hi, my name is Roxanne Shilka. I live in Batavia, but I again have lots of friends here in this neighborhood. And, um, what's happening here in St. Charles is happening everywhere. I hadn't planned on speaking, but when I heard, um, the presentation on the handle with care, a lot of flags went up. Um, and, and I'm wondering what precipitated this. Why? Because, um, I can tell you, there are studies saying the, the most successful factor that determines a student's success is parental involvement, bar none. Parental involvement, no matter what socioeconomic, what stage, what ethnicity, that determines student's success. And when I Googled, um, and, and I apologize if you've already gone over this information, it was new to me. I haven't made it to all of them. But the handle with care is an HHS program. And are you being told to implement this in order to get federal dollars? I mean, why are you all of a sudden doing this? A good teacher is going to know when their student is off. They're going to ask, the police don't need to be involved. DCFS and, and let me read, it says, the handle with care program supports children exposed to trauma violence. If it was simply police notification and it stopped there, okay, I can, I can see that, but it goes on. Says, um, there's collaboration between law enforcement, school, childcare agencies, mental health providers, and it connects families, schools and communities to mental health services. Many, many other, um, internet information talks about this. Parents seem to be an afterthought. Who's gonna, are, are are these agencies going to force the child to take counseling? Who determines the counseling? What kind of decision? It's, it's like you're, you're coming between the parent and the child that should never, ever, ever be. Parents are the number one, um, cheerleader of their child. They want their child to be successful. They want them to overcome trauma if there is. They will make that decision, whether it be, you know, a, a pastor or a priest counseling as opposed to a, a secular agency that, you know, they, that has worldviews that they don't necessarily agree with. But the school, police, DCF, DCFS, is that right? You should never usurp parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Lori Bauer, may I invite you forward?
Hello again. I, I have no clue what I just walked into. Um, I just want to say thank you to that woman back there for sharing that story. I have three boys. This is disgusting. Whoever voted yes. I, my kids don't even go to Geneva schools, public schools. You want to know why? I spend $12,000 a year on Geneva taxes. 8,000 of that goes to the, the public school. What are you teaching our children? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our citizen comments at this time. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn to closed session for the purposes of, first, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees? And two, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational or educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Bell, Mr. McNally. Thank you for the second. Uh, Ms. Marson, would you please take the roll call vote?
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mrs. Barker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuscher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairgreath?
Yes. Uh, motion passes seven, two, zero. We now will adjourn to closed session at eight forty-one PM.